Call it a war then, that Martin Board Select meeting for Thursday, December 6th. We have two second present. Dave Knoll is not here tonight. We have the town administrator, secretary recording, and for the benefit of those who are not in attendance, we have Mr. Leo Martel doing a video recording. Thank you, Leo. Okay, Bob, we have old business. We have some minutes.
Yeah, I'll give you, make a motion to approve regular minutes for the December, November 29th meeting as amended.
I'll second that. No further discussion. All in favor? By the way, I looked hard for a count of you, but not me.
Okay.
Overall.
Twenty-nine.
Yes, I'm saying.
Do you want to read?
Nope. I'll see you.
I got the story.
Could be real.
I have a cut Dave, I can do it on too. All right, I like to open up for public comment now. I see members over there, over on agenda, but public comment, anyone? Is that Leo in the back row, back row?
Yeah, there's a lot on here. I didn't see that.
Anyone? Okay, Mike, you on the agenda? Public comment, Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that next Friday, 2:00, our officer, Brian Tyler, is going to graduate from the police academy.
Okay.
So we'll see him out on the streets all week.
Can I talk to you later on?
Yes, of course.
I'll plan on that.
Yep.
And Mike, we all said we're on the agenda. I'll bring it back to the board. And now, Mike, you are on the agenda first thing. Go ahead.
They're going to put the non-public on the agenda, so you have to approve those as well.
Ah, yes, I'm on my agenda. One page. Okay, Bob, we'll take a motion of non-public.
Where is it?
Right there, time. Okay, Mike.
Okay, and you have the...
Date, time, or date.
Okay, so you have the non-public, November 29th, 2018 meeting. Your time is what time? 8:41 PM. As written, motion to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Because you keep cutting the other side.
Okay. Okay, I like to put on the agenda, Mike, guy, he's here, as Apollo from previous meeting. I owe him, I do out to Mike, and I'm ready to respond to that. Mike, bottom line, I found no evidence of unfair treatment by any elected official or staff in the town. That was my, after seeing, talking, interviewing all the people in pocket. And these are some of the circumstances which led me to that. It was unfortunate circumstance, but there were some mitigating circumstances which I'd like to go over now with you. First of all, a decision by the road agent, he delayed plowing outdoor roads across the town. It was not yours, it was all of them. I verified this, a Tenny Hill Road was delayed to what time, Leo, for example?
Oh, boy. No, they didn't plow.
Okay, so it was, and the reason behind that was due to early snowstorm, roads not quite frozen, but again, that was one factor. Secondly, the town was down one snow plowing apparatus, and that impacted plowing significantly across the town. That was caused further delay. Second, and as stated last meeting, Dave Knoll, which has done some plowing for the town of Dumbarton and Kelsey Roads, a preliminary plowing, plowing before, he was unsure of his status as a plow driver, and that has been since rectified. And to sum it up, I'd like to say, yeah, it was delayed. I think the town will try to do better, but I'm gonna just make a note, it just should be noted that even as we speak tonight, if a snowstorm hit tonight, we are still down one contractor plow because it was involved in an accident where the plow was destroyed. The person involved in the accident was not injured, but that apparatus hurts town and Jeff is engaged in trying to rectify the situation. So I, it may be delays across the town to do the paved roads because of that, down being a piece of equipment. So I just want to say, I'm sorry it happened to you, I think, because I think the town can do better. I think the town needs to do better, and I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it open for your comments, sir.
Okay. Like I said, based on last year's snow plowing performance on my road?
Yes.
The theft of my property by the road agent, Dave Knoll. I think, I don't think I'm being unreasonable in thinking that this was a deliberate act. I gotta, okay, it's unfortunate about, you know, the town's down one plow truck, what time would the, would the plow was called low?
That, that one, I don't know. They were, I think, I don't have that information. But the thing is, it was a purposeful delay of all dirt roads across the town to delay all plowing them until after the normal, any other paved roads was done. Go ahead.
Mike, they plowed no dirt roads that day.
Well...
Because what's, well, but they plowed no dirt roads that day, and I know I've talked to the, the road agent and Pete, and they didn't plow because, and they, when there's so little snow, and I agree with them, it's tearing the roads apart. And I've, I've seen it firsthand where it comes, all of it comes into my driveway as they plow. And so they, I did speak with them, they did no plowing, we had complaints from our neighbors, we had complaints from the, the postal workers, because they couldn't drive up the road. Because the road, the condition of the road, they delayed plowing those, and as it turned out, it was a good idea because it was pretty much melted by, you know, in no time. So they didn't plow the road that day.
But the thing is, I hear where you're coming from, and the potential for, if there was, shall I say, unfair treatment, I mean, as I, I can see how you could have the perception. In my opinion, it wasn't, it wasn't done this time, but there was no unfairness, you were not treated unfairly, in my opinion. And I, I would say, Mike, if it, be vigilant, if it happens. I know you had concerns with mailboxes before, being buried and stuff like that. You can feel free to bring it to our attention, and we'll act appropriately when it's found to be, if it's so found to be factual, and we can say that if it was unfair treatment. But I'm just gonna ask you to be vigilant. Okay?
Okay.
And, oh, and just regarding plowing and turnaround, please talk to your attorney. We've contacted the town attorney, and there's been communication to talk about that through the town attorney. Okay?
Okay, so you intend to start turnaround in front of the barn?
Yes.
Okay, my understanding about that is, the judge has taken my property by prescription?
Yes. Superior court.
And prescription, you get to use what you've used.
Correct.
Okay. I believe Dave Knoll's, you know, he's under the impression that it becomes a three broad road.
The width of the road, just to let you know that, I know that was one of your concerns. We saw it in an email. We discussed it with the town attorney, and we're standing to buy what, the width of the road as it was used previously, not wider.
Okay. Okay. Because when they turn around in front of the barn?
Right.
The barn used to have an addition on it. The addition was there until 1988.
Okay.
Okay, so I know they used to stack snow where that addition was, but that wouldn't, that was, prescription goes in 1968, not 1988, so it's like that building is still there.
And the things I realize, there is still, there's still action being undertaken, and we're just gonna go by the courts, and whatever it comes out to be, we'll abide by the town. We are not taking any side. We're not supporting Mr. Knoll, we're not supporting you, we're being due to the process and trying to abide by the court decision.
Okay.
I want to assure you of that. Just because he's a selectman, we're painstakingly detailed and excluding him from even discussions with our attorney, because he's a litigant in the process. And so I think we're going above and beyond to maintain our impartial, impartial as this continues to resolve, lead the dialogue. And so I'm giving you my word that, and Bob will give you his word, I'm sure, that I think is we are completely impartial by excluding him from even our discussions.
Okay. No, I believe you on that. Well, I guess nonetheless, the, is Dave Knoll gonna be continuing plowing?
I think he's gonna be initial plow, and then the initial removal going down, and maybe coming back up, and then it'll be touched up by the road agent with a bigger plow during the, if it needs sand and any salt treatment later in the, later in the day.
The same day?
With, it's the same, the same mechanism that they've done in the past, most recent past. I.e. last winter.
Well, last winter, I mean, they...
Without...
My problem with that is, it's, it's a single lane road. Well, I mean, when I say single lane, when Dave Knoll plows it with his, with his truck, it's, he only, it only gets plowed to the width of his plow.
That's, as...
And that, that leaves it as a one car.
Are you happy with that?
Well, what do you do if I, if you meet somebody coming down the road? Someone's gonna have to back up.
Oh, yes. No, what I'm saying is, a touch-up is gonna have to be done by one of the town plows later and after, as a snowstorm continues or comes to a conclusion. Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, well, that's the way they used to do it. The, Mr. Van De Bogat used to, when he was the road agent, I mean, he'd, he would come down, you know, and it'd be the same day.
Okay. Again, it all depends on, I think a reasonable amount of time. It depends upon when the snowstorm hits.
Okay.
I, I think to wait three days is like ridiculous, wait two days is ridiculous. I think within twenty, like any other road in town should be touched up, like any other road in town.
Well, that's, that's a point I tried to bring up last year. Other roads like mine got plowed to...
Yeah, just, the road agent is, is taking a special interest in this case to make sure it's done right.
Okay. All right, well, I'll leave it alone. I'll let you hear about business.
But the thing is, thank you for understanding, and the thing is, I ask you to be vigilant, and let us keep the board informed. Fair enough?
Thank you.
Okay. I like money. Mrs. Opa, come on up.
Something to get back from?
Absolutely.
An email and a...
Chief, come on up, too.
It's got a flag on it.
I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Opa, on behalf of the town of Dumbarton, for being so generous, as you have been in the previous, and on this occasion, and I'm sure you'll be, continue to be generous on future occasions.
You certainly will.
And I sincerely appreciate what you're doing, and I think, because you, he has contributed on more than one occasion to the, to some of the donations have been to the, some of the equipment purchases to support the police department, and I think that's fantastic. So thank you, on behalf of the town of Dumbarton. What he has, what he's doing today, he's basically has a, gonna donate money to upgrade and replace aging two-way radios for the police department. And I think that's just great. This'll be the third one that you've done. Yeah, and if I so, I'm gonna be so liberal to say, it's a $2,000, or $2,300 radio. So it's not just like one of these walkie-talkies. We're talking about a professional radio that will serve the community very well. So I just want to get up and say, thank you so much. I appreciate it, I really do. And Chief, the thing is, we're gonna put you in charge of all fundraising from now on.
Well, my wife and I, we try to do whatever we can for the town, you know. We donate to a lot of other organizations and stuff, and, you know, we wanna see the police department, like every other organization, get the funding that they need, and hopefully we set an example for other residents in town to, you know, continue to help the town a lot.
Chief, does that mean we can catch a budget of another $2,000 today?
I don't think so.
I might have a surprise request. No, I, I just, just a little bit. The thing is, Chief does it run a tight budget, and then we have to scrutinize it even further, so...
Yep, no, I know that. That's why we, we, we look at who needs, you know, funding.
Every, every little bit helps. So I'll let Chief take the...
Thank you very much.
Yep.
There's a sheet that I'd like you, the board, to sign.
Yes, and we're gonna sign something for you.
And make a motion?
Yep. Bob, if you'd be, so kinda make a motion to...
Uh, I've got it in front of me there. And I think I would make, I'll make a motion to accept, well, per RSA 31 dot 95 dash B, number three, parentheses, B, accept a donation of $2,308.65 from Sasha in Alina, it's Alina?
Alina.
Alina Zohar.
I'll second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
Just to say my name, sir. I just can put on a word, just...
Sir, I believe you need this.
I just want to copy.
And Mrs. Sasha, welcome to come back anytime.
You may have just started during the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hey, Ken, how are you?
And Chief, you thought I was joking about a budget of $2,000?
I hope you're right.
Well, I heard groups, and I think you were asking for another officer and another police car? Is it way too big to amend the budget, ask for a new one?
Okay. On the agenda, the next up will be the Assembly Department.
That would be...
Come on up, and let's talk, let's talk money.
Not that much.
Okay.
In comparison to the rest of the crew.
Hey, but I tell you, it's all important.
It's all relative. Okay, did you get that paid for?
Yeah, you don't have a budget working, March discussing.
Okay. I, I, my deal's pretty static. We have our increases, so, you know, the 2% for our salaries, our whatever. Any appraisal services have been, you know, static. And the computer support is static. The only thing we need this year is another $6,000 without legal budget for the utilities lawsuit that's going on.
Okay.
I saw the bill looking, and I am shocked, because I think the utilities assessment was, it was over $180,000, and I realized...
Yeah, we only pay a small percent.
We pay a small percentage.
Yes, we started out with 45 towns in on it, now there's 62, so now we're down 1.5% of the budget, of the bill.
Which is, which is not too bad.
Mm-hmm. And then we have to have the utility appraisal, too, so...
Okay.
But that's the impact with the actual cost for this year, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions, Bob, on that?
No, like you said, her budget is pretty static, it hasn't changed much. The only thing that's changing is illegal, and we anticipated something was gonna happen. You know, the side that wants to pay us, wants to cut your money, give us down, we wanted to keep it up a little.
I think they're going back to court and pay both.
So the middle account that she has there, capital revaluation, capital reserve, that would be a warrant?
Oh, yeah.
That will add to the...
That's for the 2020 meetup.
Yeah.
That's way to be around across the town.
Yeah.
And trying to just assess to go with the least expenses.
Yeah, we'll be able to speak to that at town meeting, of course.
Yes.
Okay. We'll support you the best way we can. So you'll be the lead, we'll be the support.
My cheerleaders.
Exactly. Well, a lot of people, I found a lot of people sitting in the audience, a lot of people just don't understand, why are we paying, because it's like, it's a costly thing to do a rebound.
It would be five years.
Yeah, and so we budget over five years, so it's not impacting on one year.
Yeah, exactly. Not too far by the states, so we either do it, or they can undo it, it's much more expensive.
Yeah, okay. Great. Hi, thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good night, everybody. Take care.
Did you have any questions?
We've been working together, I think we've got it covered.
May I thank you for all your help?
You're very welcome.
Okay, next on the budget, Old Home Day budget. Come on up.
Am I in the way?
People might want to see you on there.
I don't know, I didn't wear my nose glasses.
Did you say you were gonna have copies?
Yeah.
And that's what you spent since last year? Do you have copies for you? Are these a class?
Okay, who's gonna speak?
I'll just hear it.
Okay.
We got, 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 got your, the, the memo asking, asking for funding to be whatever.
General Services.
Level Services, yeah.
Yeah, well, the...
If only expenditures could be left, we'd be doing great, but we know expenses do go up.
The idea is...
Oh, should we go up?
No.
So, so we are, the question, and that, that, that's a, 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 gives, gives, gives you an idea about where money goes used to, like, what the toll was. We, we would have been over, except that, that, that had the cost of one of the bands was still donated, which, which you wanna think, and we can, can adjust maybe, you know.
Okay, so you're comfortable at the 53 level?
What, what, if, if was, if our costs were 53, but we had a donation, they took it down to 50, which is what was our budget.
So the Old Home Day has one account line, and last year we budgeted $5,000. They expended $4,068. John provided you with the detail of overall costs, but like you said, he had contributions, and you also had some table fees that you were able to offset.
Right, and that's, that's the next thing I wanted, wanted to address. We, we had $200, one of them, the rain took a lot of our stuff, so the re-fund the per donation.
Hey, that was appropriate, too.
Yeah, it was just a little bit, and that, that left us with, with 175, which in previous years has expired at the end of the year. But we're looking, looking at, at a couple of, couple of, couple of, couple of uses for, for that, that money to spend it before the end of the year, assuming that that, that rule still applies.
Okay.
It, uh, one is, one is possibly no signs. The, the other one, which, which may be a little more likely, is, is one of the town home tents, one of the posts, the, the, the center, center post, the fitting in the, in the tent has torn open. So Mark, Mark is going, going to get a quote for whatever the cost to do that.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know whether that can be done by the end of the year.
But I think in their case, when, not incorrect, they, if they get something to encumber the money...
A quote, I can encumber it.
So if you get a quote, you're gonna encumber the money to use to fix that, but...
Right, right. That would probably be the, the best way of making sure you have some, a few extra dollars before we go into next year's budget. I got one question though. Who paid for the ice cream?
It's in the budget.
I thought it was a lot of fun. I thought it was well received by all the residents.
Yeah, we were discussing it on the phone, and I think one of the fun things about Old Home Day is that we make as much as possible just free. You know, all the kids games, all the, whatever we deal with, there's no charge to anybody. And the ice cream social, we started last year, and just as an idea, so let's, let's test waters, let's see how it goes. And because it was new, there was probably, we went through less than half of as much ice creams than we did this year. And then I was just tunnel drawn, I said, we want to use it for two reasons. One is people leave real early today, we're trying to people stay a little longer. Well, if you give away something free, like free ice cream at 2:30, 3:00, they're gonna hang around.
I thought, I thought it was a lot of, a lot of ice cream was given out.
A lot of ice cream was given out, and a, a big crowd. I mean, last year we didn't have 25 people left by 2:30, and this year we have probably 100 people still there.
More than that.
And I think next year we'll have a lot more people, because, you know, once the word gets out...
I forgot how many servings, but there was over 175 servings of ice cream given out.
Oh, yeah. We went through, I think it was six of the three gallon...
And the servings were generous, and then, I made one mistake, though. I'm gonna get a big coffee can next year, tips.
And where did the tips go?
I'm, I'm still working on that.
And you also want to get one of those braces for your wrist, because the ice cream could be hard sometimes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You're gonna have to cut that tunnel before you...
It was, it was a lot of fun.
But, yeah, and, you know, we, we let people know, and to me, it was, it was very exciting to stand up there and say, we still got three, four gallons of ice cream left. If you've only had two or three servings, get back up there.
Oh, yeah.
Let's go, we can't take it home. You know, we gotta get rid of this ice cream. And people were just like, I can go for seconds and thirds, so that, you know...
Well received, well received. So I, I give you a, a plus on that.
Right, yeah, we, we keep trying different things, and some of them work good, and some of them don't.
Even with, even with the rain, the bands that played, your music selection was throughout the whole day was, I think was very, very, very good. And so, the thing is, I thought, even with the rain, which put a damper to it, the whole day was a success.
Yep.
Minus the rain.
Yeah, we, we had a lot of good feedback from people who attended, and we, we had one lady who goes to Old Home Days around the state, and she didn't tell me personally, but I might have told Karen or one of the other members. She said, I, I go to like five or six Old Home Days around the state, you know, she's probably in her 70s, and she said, I've been doing it for 20, 30 years. She said, this is the best Old Home Day I've ever been to. So to us, that's quite a compliment, because this is an Old Home Day connoisseur who compares us to other towns. And we had a band that played last year, and had their schedule not conflicted, they would have played again this year at a cheaper rate, because they enjoyed our Old Home Day so much. They said, it's great little hometown, Old Home Day. It's not some, you know, big circus, it's not, it's just wonderful.
It's not designed as a moneymaker, it's designed to have a good afternoon.
Yep.
As a service to the people.
And kind of picked up what Tom just said. One of the reasons we're under spent is one of the, some of the demonstrators I pay to offset their lost income, because they could be out working, making money somewhere. And Ollie Feil, who was doing the hand human beams, had such a great time in his den, and the whole thing, that he donated his time.
Excellent.
And so, well, this is a good time.
Yeah, we could kind of on a roll right now, so we...
Well, we look forward to seeing a great 2019 Home Day.
We'll do our best.
Well, assuming that a certain person to your right has some thumb cutting tools.
Well, the guy there, you can get him from his behind. When you go to Prince Edward Island, if you leave your wedges, Leo? Just saying, so we can show him how to cut granite.
Oh, come on over, I'll have you cussing at my house.
For practice.
Go to his house, practice.
Okay, so I, I don't see any issues with you, and we'll give it the, the old, sorry, it's chains and the glasses later on, and so far, so good. Thanks for all coming in.
Sure.
Thank you.
So John, you're gonna work on that quote for the tent repair, you and Mark?
Yeah.
If you can get that to me, I can encumber those funds.
Yep. And when are members appointed?
As, whenever they, whenever they expire.
When their terms expire, you know, when their terms expire?
They all expire at the same instant.
Just March, it'll be in March.
Okay.
It's normally a town meeting, cyclical.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I, I just want to make sure we didn't, we said for advance, because there's, 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 there's one who, who was moving. Her efforts are very well appreciated, but she's just maxed.
Okay.
But, but we have a couple people who appear to be ready to step in.
Well, I might just continue with the ice cream, one, two for them, one for me, two for them, not me.
John, are you staying for the meeting?
I would.
I had fun.
I just wanted to, I have on my list to, in spring... I just wanted to, I have on my list to bring the selectmen up to skate with your solar bid that we've been working on.
I can stay a little longer.
Yeah, we do.
Dana knows more, but I will pass on what I can.
Okay.
Nice to see you, Hobbling.
That's all right. Hey, he's moving, that's a big thing.
So it's my turn to sit back now?
Yes, please. This is the hot one. Okay. Police department. Yeah, did it work? The press as of this morning.
I did provide the board with just the spreadsheet from that package, I guess. The system packet and...
Okay, level services, but we understand there will be some increases. How do you have the board?
Last year, we presented a budget, and we also presented a warrant article asking for an additional full-time police officer. When we presented that, we made a promise that we would make some significant cuts in our part-time line, and we would do our best to hold our budget line down for this year. And that's been part of our commitment, putting this budget together for this year. The budget for 2019 was authored by the side of the line. And if you have no objections, I'd like to let him present the budget here.
Okay, you have a clue, sir?
Moving forward to 2019, we do not have any warrant articles that were going to be for something.
So you're just going to buy the vehicle?
The first page of the budget proposal that you'll see has a breakdown. Our overall proposed budget for 2019 is $458,589, which is a $42,979 increase over 2018's budget. Beneath that, you'll see all of the increases. The full-time crime control, full-time overtime, full-time holiday pay, and detective. Those are our personnel increases, which amount to $62,061. That includes several different step increases, as well as the 2% increase across the board for all employees. Contractually, you'll see prosecution, network hosting, IMC contract, and dispatch. Those are all services that we have that are contractual, and there were some increases in those lines, amounting to $3,708.
An example would be the lease, for example, would come, would be the example, which you need to be signed tonight.
Yeah, that's a dispatch card. Yeah. And then our discretionary increases amounted to $4,650. That's for supplies, training, computer hardware, and an increase in our gasoline line. And I'd be happy to go through each line with the board in the budget narrative, if you'd like.
Well, I'll let you have the floor first. Just things that pop up to my head right away, I just see, I'm looking at actual, and then, which is only takes us up through November, Lean, when does it take us up to the last day of November?
I don't believe you've gotten, you haven't updated that actual in that column.
No, no, it says of November 13th.
So I would say that actual is based on the November 13th.
Okay, so...
So there will be additional...
My own, I'm looking at some of the increases, like crime, all those crime control and the payoffs, like 239, 293, that's a huge increase. And I realize some of it is the 2%, and buried in there is a raise in step increases, I realize that. What else is it, is it hours added to that, or is it just increases across the board?
So the total line for full-time crime control, the increase is $55,108. And that's our additional full-time patrolman, 2% wage increases for all full-time employees. And one of our officers is going to be receiving a step increase in September, so that includes all of those items.
Perfect.
And what I should have mentioned before, if you look at the decreases on the first page, you'll notice we made a promise to cut our part-time crime control by at least $20,000 to help offset the cost of the additional full-time patrolman.
Correct.
And we were able to reduce it by $22,515.
So that reflects the full-time line?
Right, and then the other decrease you'll see is radio repair of $4,000.
Right.
What we're planning to do is in 2020 or 2021, we'll likely be requesting a replacement vehicle, and the radio will be part of the outfit cost. So we were able to eliminate that $4,000 from the budget to further help offset increases.
Bicular radios, yes. Okay. That was a great explanation. Gasoline, again, it's a huge increase from what was budgeted last year, but I see you're over already this year. You've still got a month to go, a month and a half to go based upon that, so you're anticipating, it's almost commensurate with what you're actually burning.
Right, and we've been averaging around $1,000 a month, so we're trying to anticipate that line based on 2018's expenditures.
Okay.
And we're also going to have an additional officer filling some additional hours above our capacity now, using that vehicle. So we're trying to anticipate that change as well.
Okay. Police dispatch is the contract?
Yes, contractual, yep.
Okay. And it went down a little bit, or just went from, essentially flat?
The police dispatch went up $2,791 from this year to next year.
I don't see that in...
No, it went down.
So if you look at the...
That's the, I apologize, that's the old spreadsheet. We receive the, if you look at your budget packet, I have the updated spreadsheet on the second page. That reflects. We received that contract yesterday with the correct number, so I had to go in and update the budget rather with that correct contractual amount.
All right, so it's 15, 6?
Six, yeah, okay, that's...
Yes, correct.
Have you been satisfied with them? We weren't, this is a, we're in the, we've used them just short-term reasonably, I mean, it's new to them relative.
Yeah, we've used them for three years, and we think we should renew for another three years.
Okay, I just want to make sure you feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think that's the best option.
Okay. Because I think the alternative, we were at Concorde one time?
We were both.
Both.
And our other, they're not doing that service anymore, so our other option would be going to county.
Okay. As long as you're satisfied with the service, so it's, okay, that's fine.
We tried to level fund as much as we could. For example, telephone, vehicle maintenance, department equipment, fees and services, uniforms, those are all level funded moving into 2019. We're also putting off some projects that we had wanted to do, because we understand the taxpayers incurred an increase for this full-time patrolman, and we want to try and bring forward a fiscally responsible budget to the taxpayers. So some of the projects that the chief and I were thinking about doing in 2019, we're just going to reevaluate and do those at another time, so we can present a budget that's...
But anything of interest that we should be made aware of, that you may want to do, that we could add it? I mean, if it's worth pursuing, or you want to really delay it?
Well, we had looked at automatic vehicle locators.
Okay.
Could have tied into our dispatch with cost now, and...
Like a GPS for the vehicle?
Yeah, the equipment cost's not that much, but it's the monthly payment for data and for licensing and stuff like that. And it's something that we're all interested in doing, but thought it would be...
I understand, it's a want rather than a true need.
We've asked, the taxpayers were very generous to us last year, and we really want to, we'll kind of thank them by trying to keep our budget lower this year.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, I'm pretty satisfied with the budget as presented, the board.
Yeah, the major increases, our step increases, and even though it sounds like 2%, it's not a lot. And it adds up, so that, I see that's one of your major increases, so... That's far, it looks fairly well.
Well, we appreciate that, and like we said, we promised at least 20, we were able to do 20 to 5, plus the decrease in the radio line, just helping absorb that cost. And as we had talked about last year, we were anticipating a $48,093 increase for that position, and our entire budget is an increase in $42,979. So we came in under what we had anticipated, again, trying to be responsible.
But the thing is, just for the record, there's always the tail.
Right, the benefits.
Yeah, the retirement and benefits, that picks up, that goes in the town budget.
Right.
So, the full picture is, we always have to include the tail with that, when we're looking at the aggregate budget. But that's fine, I think, because we're supporting that.
Just one thing to add, we did put a line in there for another desktop computer. Windows 7 is going end of life, beginning in January. So we've got four machines that we got in 2014, they'll be five, six years old. What we anticipated doing is...
Technology refresh.
We're going to buy one this, at the end of the year, probably December, right at the very end of the year. Ask one the following year, probably get them at the same time, so we'll have two then. We'll look at the feasibility of updating to Windows 10 on some of the other machines, and get to a replacement.
I think you may be ahead of the curve, as far as other companies, other departments, because Windows 10, you always wait till it spends a year or two, get the bugs worked out, then you take it.
Well, it's been, we actually have one Windows 10 machine, that the ZOP has donated to us a year or two ago. And that's where it's going, so really what we need to do. But with Windows 7, which I prefer, going into life, we really need to...
How many Windows 7 do you have?
We have four Windows 7 machines.
Can I make a, how much, how is your budget year end this year?
We're going to come in on the skin of our teeth.
Okay, I was going to suggest if that would be a discretionary purchase for the year end, if you had funds available in this year's budget. I would look at that.
Can I speak on that? We, I actually went before the voters a few years ago for money to replace equipment in the town offices. I don't know that that would separate us from the police department. We've fulfilled the treasurer's laptop, the transfer station's station. I have about nine grand still in that budget for, that will lapse at the end of 2020, so maybe we need to look at what you have.
We would need to replace four, so there would be about $4,000.
$4,000, I know that we...
If you want to cover that, we can remove the $1,000 increase from the budget.
Yeah, but I'll look at what we have currently in our office to make sure we're not under the same predicament as you, and make sure that we're all up to speed, and then...
Because Windows 7, it goes into, end of life next year.
End of 2019?
Yeah, 20, I think it's January of 2020.
Okay, I'll check with our text department.
Question, my sugar? 2020 has a good feel for it, I just occupationally, I like that number.
I'd still run XP if they were, so...
No, you don't even get my, he caught it right away.
Yeah. Okay, who wrote my head?
I like 2020.
He's not the detective.
Yeah, that's what we have water for. But that'd be great, if we can encumber some money out of that, that'd be great, we could do something for that.
Yeah, then we will need that $1,000 in the line.
Well, I've been asked questions, I'm pretty satisfied, good job.
Thank you for your time.
And X for your work. Yes.
Thank you.
So let's give this one line item a change in the spreadsheet.
Chief, you're working, you'll be on tomorrow, right?
Yes.
You can call the landline, the tunnel line, I'll give you a call. Okay, are you going to be at the wiring room?
Possibly, yeah, maybe I can get you a look.
Probably see if... Okay, thank you, just want to discuss that new option?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, agenda, let's keep going. Thank you. Bob, we have some donations, I'll make it.
I was looking at them, okay.
Okay, do we have the check in hand?
We have four checks in hand.
Okay, for $275?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for RSA 31095-Bravo, Roman Number 3, Paragraph B, to accept donations in the amount of $275 for the REITs across Dunbar from residents.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe if you make appropriate deposit. Okay, we're down to... Essentially, we're down to...
Do you want to bring John up to talk about the town business?
First, John, we'll, whenever I hold you up, come on up, and we'll talk about energy.
Yep.
I saw a great article in the Milfords opened an energy solar farm.
Yeah.
And they contracted with a outfit from Manchester.
Yep.
And there are lots of towns who are getting into that now, and they're...
I only say that because it may be worthwhile, it's a bigger town, but I think it's maybe interesting to talk to some of these bigger towns who are just basically executing contracts now, and see if they would have done anything differently.
Yeah, 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 part of what we had, what we did is setting up for this going around. We spoke to Guy Webster, who is putting into putting, putting in a system, and then also Allenstown, to learn from there.
They're good pots in the bat, most.
Right.
Okay, Lean's got some information, I believe, on that.
Yeah, I've been working with the Energy Committee, they, I gave them the RFP template. They utilized that, put all the information they needed, they felt would work for them. They returned that to me, and then I got it posted on NHMA, got it on our Hot Topics website, doing business. I've gotten a few calls, it's all readily available out there, and the responses I've gotten back from a couple of them is that they're eager to meet with the Energy Committee for that walkthrough, and that is scheduled for Tuesday, December 11th, at 1:00. And I have made this transfer station aware that they're, they will be present, they are open for business, so they'll make sure that they communicate to the group that where they need to be and how to stay out of everyone's way, and I think that will go well.
Yep.
And then they have a little over a week to put their RFP together.
It closes.
It closes on Wednesday, the 19th, and I'll have, I have it on the agenda for the board to open, and the Energy Committee will be present at that time, too, to review them.
Per our expression the other day, we are looking at what are the means to find my business, whether it's a lease, a power purchase agreement by outright, loan, or whatever. And they have been asked to quote those options.
Great, you know, it's, I walked away from your presentation by the Energy Committee that it was almost a no-brainer for the lease. I mean, it just seemed like it was a little money upfront, and we get, we pay, they get to take some of the energy and sell it, we get to buy it from them at a little rate.
They, the, the, the different methods all have different...
Pros and cons.
Right, and when you, you, you get that down to the detail, and when we do the final with you, you know, once we've got the quotes through, we can work those out, and we'll look at the lower cost versus maybe a little bit more.
When we get the RFPs in, since, you know, the selectmen are not the subject commander experts here, we're relatively contrast to you. So I might make a recommendation, but I like your idea, the thing is, we can give it to the committee to basically review and make them up with a recommendation.
That's right, but you do need to have, open them up, they're sealed bids, if you opened up in a public meeting, and at that point, you just hand them over to them from head.
And the thing is, we won't...
That's the plan we have.
And we'll probably make a decision in the following week, after everyone's had an opportunity, we won't make an immediate decision that night.
Yeah.
But after we get, we'll pass them on to you, and we'll look for you guys to scrutinize them, make our recommendations on behalf of the town.
The quotes are due on the 19th, is that it?
Yeah, Wednesday, the 19th.
Yeah, so that's getting real, real close to Christmas, I don't know whether you're reading the Thursday of Christmas yet.
Yeah, we are. I had a plan on closing.
I'm not entirely sure if we can put that, put it solid.
We just, we just have to know to Lean, when you can present that.
Yeah, I think we still, they're in a good place right now, they've got it almost 100% once they get them in, and we have plenty of time.
Time to get for the warrant out, okay.
Yeah, warrant or budget, even if you decide.
Bob, you're happy with that decision, with that path?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's another thing, is we're, I know a little bit, but the thing is, John knows a lot.
And frankly, on this project, Dana is leading the IID for him, because he has more knowledge than I do of it.
Okay.
I don't need to be the one, or, you know...
Well, the thing is, you make a good team, because you have the access to utilities, those are questions that the bidders will want to have, and be able to come up with them.
So it's a true team. So it's a true team effort.
Yeah, it is.
So does the, this stuff, and I think it's a state, when the state rebate of thirty percent expires, I think at some point in time, does that play into that? Is that gonna have an impact or is that just for the residential versus commercial?
I think it applies across, right now, I don't have that, that answer on me, there's, it's, it's like when you lease a car, you read the contract, you know, how long it is and there's all the whatevs and things like that in it, so. I, I'd rather, rather address that once we, we have reviewed the quotes and then make, make a rec, representation. I, I don't want to say something that I, is what I think or believe and then have to undo that or later.
Right, I'm just curious if it has an impact on, on it or, you know, it's thirty percent seems like a large part of the cost, you know, that's borne by whether, I, I know it's gonna be the installer that sees the benefit, you know, but, uh, I know it expires at some point in time, although I guess there's legislation now to reinstate that.
And also, also, uh, 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 not all, but, but, but several of those, the, 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 what happens on the date it expires is that no new ones can be done.
Okay.
But if they're already in existence, then they are, uh.
So this is in the queue, we're all set?
If this one works that way and a lot of them do, sorry.
Great.
I'm sorry not to be able to give you.
We, we, we look forward to having those bids come in and then your, your input and then we can, we'll make a decision based on your input.
Yeah, and, uh, when, what, what's the, uh, the kind of like.
Well, the thing is, I, I think it'd be worthwhile to look at proposals and I think what Bob, uh, is alluding to that, uh, timing, if, if it's critical for, to, for us to qualify for a rebate, I'd say we just make sure that we meet, look at the proposals and make sure we meet any requirements, so if it's gotta be done, they say before December thirty-first, we'll meet separately if we have to get it done.
Special meeting, we're sure.
Yeah.
That would be worth it.
Yeah.
I know that if, if it's a, uh, if it's a rebate we're talking about, the rebate actually isn't, it's a benefit to us.
Right.
But it actually goes to the installer more so than us, so it helps reduce the cost, that's what they're looking at, they're looking at the Fed rebate, they're looking at the state rebates, anything they can to bring the cost down.
Yeah, see, if, if the installer owns it for a while, then you get to take the federal tax rebate.
Right, but it's like buying a car though, if you get a rebate, they lower the, our monthly payment.
Oh, that wouldn't.
Trick them down.
That wouldn't happen.
So John, just to answer your question, my calendar says that I'm shooting for a public hearing on the budget, February seventh. So I try to encourage the departments to get in early on so the selectmen can really look at line-by-line items, so I'd rather not wait and have surprises late in, into January, whereas I'm discussing my part of the budget, so the sooner, the earlier you can, the better, if, if that December thirty-first affects your, uh, rebate, again, that's more for you.
We'll be flexible.
And on our side, it's also in our interest to get it to you so much possible because then we can step away from, move on something else, you know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John, we look forward to putting hearing back to you.
Yep.
Your committee.
Keep in touch.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, tell, tell me when they come in.
Absolutely, we'll let you know.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I wanna go through mailboxes, I'm, Bob. I have a, uh, a step increase for Dave Nickerson, he's going up to, uh, step three, I don't have any problems with that, Lean meets all the requirements.
And this is, uh, this will be something new that you'll see more often in your box because the request of the auditor, they want, um, rather than a total summary of a, a wage increase, they want to see the, the individual that it applies to specifically with the amount on there, so you, you'll have a couple more with the new hires that we've gone through, once they've gotten all their paperwork in place, there'll be a couple more on your basket if you're deciding.
Okay, not a problem, we'll get that done. Uh, this is, Bob, this is an FYI, we have, uh, the central regional planning commission has something, is working on a, uh, software and they, she, uh, to help manage our roads and, uh, Donna White's been, uh, volunteer to be a representative and Lean will sign that, but just an FYI for us.
Yeah, and we'll actually let her speak on it when she comes before board to talk about a budget. Um, in the past, we had, uh, appointed, uh, the same individual in that position, uh, they are the ones that Jeff touched on last week, saying that they met, Jeff and she met with Central Hampshire to discuss the software and how they had started it and they're still moving forward based on the recommendation of those two individuals, but this is just a, it's called a TAC meeting and it, it's comprised of a number of different communities that are involved with, uh, managing town roads and getting the information to the state and D O T and whatever else they can do, so that will stay in your basket and we'll be discussing it again at later date.
Okay, we have another next item, which is not a problem with the software, I understand we all have to pay for the software if we embrace it, that's what Jeff was looking to.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, this is a, we're in a butter situation, but I think it's, uh, my neighbors are doing a, a lot line adjustment, Robert Kaminsky and Chris Johnson, it's not Mike, not Diskaminsky. This is FYI.
A very minor.
This is the lease, Bob, uh, that they were alluding to, this is the lease, the lease department is, they want a signature, it's, uh, it's essentially, um, a lease for the dispatching service owner's town. So Lean wants witnesses here, so if I sign here?
Yep, on it, yes.
That's a three-year, I think, right?
It is, and I did attach the last three-year single pages so you can see, there really isn't a, a large increase from year to year, that's the older lease and.
That's the month, that's what they were talking about, one, ten grand, another two, twenty, hundred.
Twenty-eight, is that what it is?
Uh, increase.
Right.
There you go, need a witness.
No, witness, okay, that's it, Lean will explain, Lean will witness all of us, or at least one will witness, we will witness at first.
See.
I'm sorry.
I saw it.
Be sorry.
He says, I didn't see anything.
Lean, this is a, planning boards on this, uh, hookset, that can go circular file, that does not apply to Dunbar at all. Okay, uh, one of our employees was involved in, uh, unauthorized overtime, he was sole counsel. This is just more information that goes back to Lean about the solar panels, it was passed over to the energy committee, that was an FYI. Did, Bob, I think is, uh, in a couple weeks, we have someone, uh, we have Mr. Jeffrey Moody of twenty-five Everett Road, that's at the base of Everett Road, there's, uh, some lots behind him, he's interested in purchasing them, he's, uh, was gonna talk to the board selectmen, um, about what, what it takes to get access to him and upgrading roads, he's gonna come and talk to the board, there's some reading material in him, Lean, could you make copies for everyone and make sure they have copies, this is take-home and read material, so we can be informed, there's some restrictions on that, that was made twenty-five years ago and things have changed since then, and so he wants to know his options and he's already been in talk with Lean and, uh.
And I've asked Jeff to be present for that because if there's anything related to the construction of road, the cost, um, he would be the one that.
So I, I, copy's for everybody.
Okay.
Okay, please, that's take-home assignment.
Yep.
That road comes to screeching hollow.
Very screeching.
All right.
That's, that's, uh. That's, that's probably everything.
My mailbox is, my mailbox is almost empty, so I'm gonna open for public comment and be sure of the right to come back if I find anything else. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board and, uh, I'm just gonna take a moment to look through my notes here, I'm gonna make a budget file now. Lean, uh, Lean, do you wanna have this information about the radio?
Pass it to me.
Two-way radio.
Oh, that was the, yeah, I'll put it with the, um.
With the.
Letter in my reconciling records.
And I have my inbox, this goes with Lean, this goes with, uh, Chairman's, uh, counsel secretary. All right, my inboxes are now empty, Bob, I'm gonna open up to you if you have anything for the group.
So I'm looking for, that list of names that you had?
Yeah, um.
And you said you had what, thirty?
Yeah, I actually, if you count it, there's thirty-one, that includes all employees, no elected officials.
So we're talking about seven, seventy-five, okay. And we do have, we, we sure have some money in the maintenance budget, right?
Um, I'm sure we do.
General buildings?
We do, um, we, I just, uh, reached out to, um, our, our J W F, is that the name of, of the siding?
Yeah.
That you guys approved last week, I haven't heard back with, from him yet and, um, we're still waiting on work in progress for a second quote on the bathroom for the transfer station or if they come in at the price that we got the first one in, that's not gonna be a lot. So yes, we do have somebody in that budget.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'd like to do is, uh, make a motion that, uh, 'cause I know, I know it's never been done before, but to, uh, give each one of the town employees, whether they're part-time or full-time, a twenty-five dollar gift card, I don't know if it's to the mood or what the preference would be, uh, but keeping them all under one amount, uh, so I'd make that motion first of all, and then we can talk about it, so.
I'll, I'll say.
Make a motion to, to give a twenty-five dollar gift card to all the employees of the town, part-time, full-time, it comes out to seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Non-elected, right.
Non-elected, it's employees.
I second that.
And the reason is, and I know it's tough to get people and it probably isn't anything, but it's probably a, a, to make someone feel good, you know, a little incentive, you know, to get something, you know.
It almost feels like a, a small thank you, you know, here and, you know, and everyone, everyone who, virtually everyone, I don't know anyone who does not, I mean, a lot of people like Can't Hurts, but the market basket is fine.
They're good prices.
But, and the reason I made it tonight is because you're getting closer to that drop dead date.
Yeah, I'll have to make a phone call and see how we can pay for it, it'll be credit card or by check.
Hey, Leo's not an employee.
Yeah.
He's joking.
Not paying one to you.
So, and you know, and I was saying, one of the, most of the departments, you know, it's not a big token, but it is something to say, we recognize.
This is the first, and I'm sure that people would have appreciated.
And the other part is, those people that work over the transfer station, probably bringing their recyclables there too, but at the same time, they really get very little, you know, and the part-timers really get very little in town, so it's a little something, but to isolate and say, we'll take care of people that aren't making much and we're not gonna take care of the other employee, isn't, you know, it's not the proper thing to do, I think doing it to everyone is the right thing.
Yeah, I, I don't see any issue with this, Bob. I have, I think it's, I think it's a good thing to do and legally, I don't think, I think we can do it.
No, you think.
There's no restriction on that, so I think it's, uh, the right thing to do. So I'd like to close discussion and move for a, a motion.
Sure, if the motion's made.
Go for the good motion, yes, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I go yes.
I go yes too, so motion carries and, uh, I'd like to get, uh, good, uh, logistics so that you can handle Lean, okay? Okay, now I'm gonna go around, it's, it's still with you.
Uh, no, I've got the information I need for the person who had their mailbox hit, so I'd like to do it face-to-face with them, uh, rather than over the phone, it just seems a little more personal if you get a chance to talk to them.
I'd like to criticize the board for, uh, a vague act on one item, if I could be so kind, it's a, the town pound, we did not get to that this year, so I'd like to, I would say that it's, uh, it's something the board fell short of and I think is, we need to address that, if not in the winter, we're gonna have to do it first thing this spring, so I'd like to make that.
Snow as well, you know, there's still, those hogries are still.
And elected, yeah, yeah, and so, uh, when, once David turns, I could service that up, so Lean, put that on next week's agenda.
Okay.
Uh, the town pound, uh, to readdress that.
I think I'll shoot Dave an email reminder so he can reach out to those individuals that he spoke to.
I'd like to get a, a resolution sooner than later, if we can do something before then the year, I think it'd be great. So, Leo, I damn forgot about that.
I speak about that, uh, weekly with Kale.
Okay, but we did, it was definitely not forgotten here.
But I did, decided not to bother you guys, you got stuff you're doing now, the snow's on the ground, so I didn't wanna bother you guys with it, but come spring, I would've.
Okay, but it's, it's not, it's not forgotten?
Yeah, right, good, I can see that now, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm gonna see what else do I have, that, Bob, that's all I have too, so I'm gonna go to the town administrator.
All I had was that, uh, update with the energy committee, John was so nice to stick it out and go over a few things, I'm still waiting on one more quote at least, um, for the bathroom.
What about the roof?
And then the roof, um, I sent him an, uh, an email, it usually takes him a few